Hey everybody, welcome. Well, you know, we're about 30 minutes away from another Landmark Live episode. I'm Ivan Foley, this is Chris Kamler. Right? So, you know, next Wednesday, no, it's not next Wednesday, actually, the night before Thanksgiving is Platt City's downtown holiday lighting celebration. Chris and I are going to be enjoying a day off, okay, that night, so we're not gonna be around. So, we thought that we would beat the city of Platt City to it. We're gonna do a landmark holiday lighting celebration tonight. An impromptu crowd of pairs and pairs of folks are lining up, ready to watch us flip the switch.
Move the crowd back, please.
Chris, are you ready?
Please move the crowd back.
Crowd control. Wow.
Wow.
It's exciting. Big night for us. Chris, I want you to know, you're the first ever person. Four folks rolling by the bus!
No problem, thank you.
Yeah, you're the first ever person gets to flip the switch for the landmark. Congratulations.
We have all these famous people here.
There are some celebrities in the crowd. Here we go. Three, two, one. Go! Oh yeah. I am moved. Wow. Very nice, thank you. Thank you, folks. You can all go home now. No hot chocolate. Hey, at 6 o'clock, we're going live with all three Platt County Commissioners, gonna have a good time, and we're gonna grill them with some very tough questions, right, Chris?
Uh, grill, I heard grill.
I am hungry.
Or some sort of place of warmth.
Yes. We'll see you guys, stay warm, we'll see ya at 6 o'clock. Thank you. It's another episode of Landmark Live. Who thought we would last this long, Chris Kamler, when we first started this gig?
I'm still basking in the glow of turning on the holiday lights.
It was awesome, my man.
It's the reason for the season, that's what it is.
Downtown Platt City will never be the same, I tell you what. And the crowd we had.
I apologize for that.
With no advance notice, we had such...
The crowd, I think the chattering of the teeth was louder than the clapping, but still, it was nice.
And the way they were asking for hot chocolate, like it was really cold or something.
They really were into the holiday festive, for sure.
Kinda weak, kinda lame, but you and I plugged through, I tell you what, the building looks great. I mean, we've got the fall decorations in the window with the Christmas lights. We are a paper for all seasons.
This is the oldest building in Platt City?
Yeah, well, at least a commercial building in downtown square, is what we say.
Jesus, that's a lot of caveats.
It is. Have you been in the basement? You still haven't been in the basement?
No, I'm not going to the basement.
Alright, you guys, I tell you what, we are rolling in the advertisers this week. I reached out, and I reached out to another advertiser, and she responded greatly with not only wanting to sponsor the show, but with giving us a boatload of prizes to give away, some of which we're gonna give away tonight, and some of which we're gonna save for later episodes. But our newest sponsor is Dr. Stacy and Dr. Trent Blaha at Platt Valley Dental Care. They will treat you like family because they are. It's a mother-son dental team educating their patients on the importance of dental health, and how it affects the rest of your body. The office accepts many insurance plans and offers an in-house discount plan to make dental procedures affordable to all. Their professional team will be helpful and compassionate through your dental procedures. Check out their online scheduling at pvdentalcare.com, or give them a call at 816-858-2027. Chris, are you ready for our special guest tonight? Have you done a lot of preparation for the next show?
Yes, sure.
First time ever, we've actually, we've done some preparations.
We have real, like, real live politicians in the room today.
We do, I'm a little...
I'm a little intimidated, I'm not gonna lie to you.
Very much so. Tonight, you guys, we have the three Platt County Commissioners. We will introduce them now. To our left, my left right here, Ron Sheber, Presiding Commissioner. Welcome, Ron.
Thank you, Ivan, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming on. To my immediate right, Ms. Dagmar Wood, First District Commissioner. Thanks, Dagmar. John Elliott, Second District Commissioner.
Hello, everybody.
And here we are, you guys, ready to rock and roll. Are you guys prepped?
We are prepped and primed.
Alright, now, now which one of you, I'm sure you kinda chit-chatted maybe a little bit before the show, which one of you do you think, of the three, as you look around the room here, which one are you worried might say something either inappropriate, or something they might regret during this live show? Because this is live fake TV, you guys, I mean, you say something now, you can't take it back. Who are you worried about saying something that they might regret? Which one of the three?
They're all three.
No, 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 because you know that's gonna happen. So, you're worried about Dagmar?
Yeah, I'm worried about Dagmar.
Dagmar? Okay, well, let's work on Dagmar.
Yeah, no, absolutely, that sounds good.
Alright, you guys, this week was a big news week in the county. I tell you what, one of the highlights, one of the articles on the front page dealt with a proposal by the Platt County Commissioners, put forth by Second District Commissioner John Elliott, to allow legal carry of firearms in county buildings, certain county buildings. John, tell us about your proposal and what's going into that thought process.
Well, what's going into it is that we have just started discussing it, to give people the opportunity to exercise their constitutional right, particularly when there's no law enforcement available at their meetings. We have meetings and people in there, you know, during the day and in the evening, and with what we witnessed Sunday, it's just time that we let people defend themselves, and they need to.
Do you think, I don't own a firearm, which probably puts me in the jury up here in Platt County, I would think, but the only thing I would worry about, obviously, is everybody's carrying guns, then, you know, the small percentage of people that are knuckleheads have a gun at their disposal and can use it if they get in verbal conflicts or physical conflicts, and there's guns everywhere, and then, you know, there's, that makes it more dangerous instead of safer. What kind of protections would be out there for that type of incident?
Well, there aren't any protections from craziness.
That's true.
You know, we exist because of self-responsibility, and we have rules and punishment for those that don't exercise that.
What, and I didn't get to hear the, if, Ron, what are your thoughts on the proposal? Are you feeling along the same lines as John on this one?
Well, you know, it is a constitutional right to keep and bear arms, and so, yes, I feel like it's something that we need to seriously discuss, and I want it to be safe in Platt County. We have employees that are in that building every day, we have constituents who come to use the services in that building, and as John said, there is, there is no protection from crazy. So, when someone, bad guys wanna carry a gun, usually there's only one way that stops the havoc that they can wreak, and that's someone else with a gun.
There is no protection from crazy. Do you guys feel safe here in the landmark tonight? Speaking of no protection from crazy, are you feeling safe in this building? Do you?
It's slowly going down.
Which one?
The chances are slowly going, is the front door locked?
Which one? Oh, no, because this is an open meeting. Which one of you is packing heat tonight? Anybody?
Well, part of the...
Prefer not to say.
Part of the duty is that is, you never know.
Do you think that there is, do you think that there is a firearm within the landmark building?
There should be.
I'd put money on it.
You've seen my editorials, obviously, so... Dagmar, give us your thoughts on this proposal.
Um, I'm supportive of it. I actually had an instance, you know, I served on the jail committee several years ago, and there was an occasion where there was someone who I felt like was unstable, and he made a threat to one of the Commissioners, actually said that this Commissioner needed to have a bullet in his head. So, I made sure that that Commissioner was aware that this unstable person knew, that he knew about this threat, and encouraged him to make provisions to defend himself. So, I mean, this does happen, you don't hear a lot about it behind the scenes, but I was sufficiently alarmed enough and knew this person to be unstable enough that it was a concern, so...
Now, how quickly do you guys wanna move on this? What's the process that we'll go through on this one?
Well, there's not a timeframe on it, it's moving through the process right and not in a hurry. Last thing we wanna do is adopt an ordinance and then find out that there's a flaw in it, and then have to start back over. So, we're gonna try to do it correct in whatever time it takes to do it.
Let me ask, have you investigated options other than that? You mentioned the Platt County building is not secured, maybe hiring a, you know, Sheriff's Department security person, similar to, you know, SRO officers at schools and whatnot. Is there kinda been a trade-off on that, or is that not necessarily financially feasible?
Well, it's very much a financial issue, that the money's not available. You know, years ago, we had a checkpoint at both the courthouse and the administrative building, and due to budget cuts, it was determined to eliminate that. The money's not there again, and even if it was, is that a guarantee that these things are stopped? What about at night, when we have night meetings? Do we still have a fully staffed checkpoint? And then what about meetings in other buildings? So, you know, sure, we could do certain things here, but that doesn't guarantee anywhere else.
Interesting.
Who would've thought we would've needed a security guard in a place of worship in Texas? In a small place, I mean, that was a small church, but those people are hurting down there. And I'm convinced that, again, you don't stop something like this from happening usually, except when someone has a gun. So, where do you stop putting security guards then? Do you stop at the church? I mean, what? Who? We can't rely completely and totally on law enforcement to protect ourselves. It's the reason that our founding fathers said, "We're going to make sure that people have the right to keep and bear arms."
Yeah, I'm completely for all that. My concern would be if there's a heated committee meeting, or something, you know, where the public is allowed in, and, you know, we've seen video after video of other, you know, governmental meeting-type areas where people are angry or upset about something, not that that really happens, you know, in Platt City, but Platt County, but, you know, it's just if, if it's allowed, it's, it just is open to mischief, and that would be my big concern.
And if it's not allowed...
It's open to mischief. To catch 22.
The only people that are going to carry a gun, if it's not allowed, are the people that are willing to carry outside of our ordinance.
And we don't read that many stories about the situation you described in other places. So, I mean, yes, it's a possibility, it is a concern, but we haven't seen that occur where it could already.
Hey, you guys at home, hit like or comment, or let us know you're out there, because three of you are gonna get picked to play some games later on, and we've got some great prizes tonight, Chris. I tell you what, we've got concert tickets, two tickets to Bret Michaels, we've got a fancy new gizmo courtesy of Platt Valley Dental Care, and we've got a third prize that the Commissioners are giving away. You can win breakfast for two with your County Commissioners, more about that later. We're gonna play a rousing game of Fact or Crap with these folks, Chris. They're actually gonna pose the questions to us.
I'm terrified.
I did not sleep last night, worried about this. And let me explain again, our newest sponsor is Platt Valley Dental Care. Call 816-858-2027 to schedule your family's appointment with Dr. Stacy and Dr. Trent at Platt Valley Dental Care. The Blahas will treat you like family because they are family. They educate their parents on the importance of dental, patients on the importance of dental health, and how it affects the rest of your body, offering the highest possible care to children and adults. Check out their online scheduling at pvdentalcare.com. Thank you, Platt Valley Dental Care, for being a loyal sponsor tonight. Guys, let's move on to the, one of the other stories of the week. The Platt County Salary Commission meets every two years, they met this week. The Salary Commission, by a six to four vote, voted in a two-and-a-half percent pay raise for county office holders. So, in other words, we have county office holders voting in a pay raise for county office holders, that's the way the system works. I noticed that all three of you voted against. Let's start with Dagmar, your thoughts, your opinion on the six to four vote by the Salary Commission to raise salaries effective in 2019?
Well, obviously, I was disappointed that we lost that vote. Two-and-a-half percent, it doesn't sound like a lot, but we have a lot of budget constraints, that we don't have monies allocated for yet, we have medical examiner costs are rising, we've got a quadruple capital murder case that we have no funding for yet, the cities are going out of the law enforcement business and the courts business, so there's a lot of things out there right now that we don't have funding for. So, this last budget season, we had asked the several office holders after we had worked on our budget, and this $1.2 million surprise came our way, where an emergency radio payment was not made, and we had gone back to our office holders and asked for some budget cuts in addition to what had already been made, and several of them cut personnel lines. And so, I would've liked to have seen that addressed first before, and I think Rob Willard talked about that too, when he had dissented as well, our treasurer was the other fourth vote who did not support that increase. So, before, I think the office holders get anything, I think we need to make that, the personnel lines back whole again. But whether that's gonna even happen this coming year is yet to be seen.
Where does Platt County get the majority of their money? What is their income?
Well, you've got the half-cent sales, the general sales tax, and there's a half-cent for parks and stormwater as well, and property taxes as well, so...
So, it's a primary, it's just taxes, and I guess there's no main revenue generator outside of that, right?
Not that I'm...
Minimal fees, we have minimal fees, you know, planning and zoning has some fees, but for the most part, it's the taxes.
And the majority of it is sales tax, right?
And use tax too, you know.
Would, and I'm completely dumb about all this stuff, but would, does anything from KCI, or some of the, you know, amenities that are in Platt County, does that trickle down at all? And, you know, we just passed the new airport, and that'll be, you know, 10 or 15 years down the road, I'm sure, but are any of those things potential revenue generators for the county, since they sit in the county?
Obviously, we do get additional revenue as we get additional real estate, additional sales. But remember, we also deal with the Hancock Amendment, which is a great amendment to our constitution in Missouri that limits the amount of growth that you can get from taxes. So, yes, we will get some growth from that, but right now, expenses are outpacing revenue growth. Expense increases are outpacing revenue growth, and until we restructure the tax and get the tax aligned with the needs of the county, law enforcement, roads and bridges, it was just an inappropriate time, I believe, for us to give ourselves a raise.
So, define restructure the tax, is that raise taxes? And is that something that the Platte Countyans need to vote on, or is that something that you guys decide? I mean, there's only two ways to make a budget balance, spend less money or get more money. So, I mean, if you guys are out of money, there's only one more way to get more money in the coffers, and that's taxes to go.
We have a half-cent parks tax dedicated only to parks. How much do we have dedicated toward law enforcement? Completely dedicated? Zero. That's out of balance. When you look at the primary functions of county government, we need to, when the time is right, yes, it will likely require a vote of the people, but we will likely want to decrease that, we will be, as far as I'm concerned, we will be decreasing the parks tax, and we will be increasing, or trying to get the citizens to say, yes, law enforcement's a priority.
I'm glad you mentioned parks, because that's about the only other dog I have in this hunt. I'm a father of a baseball player, and he spends a lot of time in your guys' parks, playing in tournaments. I'm kinda surprised that the tournaments, you know, we pay X number of dollars as a team to participate in a tournament, Platt Ridge or wherever, do you guys make money off of that? You guys should be, if you're not. It certainly would be a revenue generator, you could finish off Platt Purchase and make that a revenue generator, you know, these, I just know baseball, because that's kinda what my family has known the last 35 years or so, but we're spending a lot of damn money on these tournaments up here, and if you guys are broke, I'm a little perturbed that that money's not coming into the county. John, take that one. You got a crap-eating grin on your face? Did I step in a hole or something, or?
No, I'm gonna let Ron, because he's got a few more years' experience on how this works with the league. But Chris, I wanted to add, there's a third option, you said cuts expenses or raise taxes. The third one is to restructure the existing taxes.
Sure, yep, you're right.
And that's what we're focusing on.
Yeah, explain that, John, because you've talked about this previously. You'd like to see that half-cent sales tax with parks restructured, so explain to the folks what you're thinking.
Well, it's, what do parks, what's the Parks Department need going forward? How much money? Currently, it's bringing in $8 million. We've been buying and building, and that's coming to an end, so we don't need all that capital money going forward. What do we need to maintain, adequately maintain? And keep in mind, part of that is also stormwater, which is a growing issue in Platt County. The more concrete goes down, the more stormwater problems you have. That means more money needed for stormwater. So, how much do we need to maintain the parks and to address an ever-increasing stormwater issue? So, right now, we're looking at a quarter, which is a half of the half, so that's $4 million. That would allow us then to dedicate the other $4 million to public safety. And right now, all public safety expenses, which if I remember right, is, it's over 50% of our general revenue budget, that would be $4 million that would then go to public safety that would not be having to come out of general revenue.
In your opinion, the Parks Department would be fine with a quarter cent? What is the level you think would be appropriate for the Parks Department in the tax restructuring that you're talking about?
Well, at this part, point, and we're letting Daniel develop the long-term budget for parks, with everywhere in our, in the courthouse, particularly in the commission area, we're doing long-term budgeting. Daniel's putting the budget together to come back and tell us what he thinks they'll need to maintain the parks and to fund stormwater.
Hey, folks at home, hit like or comment, do something to let us know you're out there, because we're gonna pick three of you, not two, but three of you to play games with us, and we're gonna have some great prizes tonight, as we mentioned, it's gonna be fun, I tell you what.
We're gonna make it worth your while to sit through the budget discussion that we're having right now.
Absolutely.
We're gonna give away some free crap.
We're getting to the fun stuff, and you know what? Chris and I have our returning feature for Degenerate Gamblers tonight.
Yes, absolutely.
Our lock of the week, so you degenerates, hang around for that. And by the way, Elite Events, Mobile DJ and Event Production is another sponsor tonight. I tell you what, Ryan Rainey is more than just a DJ, he offers a service that can do it all, from corporate events to weddings to birthday parties, bar mitzvahs, everything in between. For your next event, make it an Elite Event. Find them at eliteeventsmo.com.
Could he DJ the next County Commissioners' meeting?
That would be awesome, I tell you what. That'd be fantastic.
Hit the gavel.
You know, if Ryan were to do that, what music would you pick, Dagmar? What's your favorite jam for Ryan to come over there and jam to the next Commission meeting?
Somebody said Pointer Sisters on Facebook today.
You were a Donna Summer fan.
Donna Summer, yeah, okay, that'd be great.
You're from the disco age then, for you to know that. You're a 70's chick then, it sounds like.
I'm more 80's.
80's, oh.
I was gonna go 90's, Ivan.
I didn't wanna ask. Donna Summer was 70's.
I'm a 70's guy.
You're 70's? So, what would be the music, if we're gonna tee up Ryan Rainey to have a gig over there with you guys, what music you want?
We'd probably do Aerosmith or something.
I like that, that's good. I think Ryan could do that.
The kids still like that to date, too.
The kids love the Aerosmith, they can't get enough of the Aerosmith.
John, our friend Ryan Rainey is queuing up the music for a meeting over there at the county. What music you want Ryan to bring?
Ozark Mountain Daredevil's pretty good stuff.
For real, for real, you are a gun toter and an Ozark Mountain Daredevil fan.
Yes, sir.
That is excellent. I think Ryan has all those, you know, Donna Summer and the Ozark Mountain Daredevils and Aerosmith, that's all, that's all on this playlist.
That's where we go.
It's gonna be a good time. You know, when you guys are having your meetings, we've talked about some things that are obviously out in the public eye, when you're having your meetings, and you guys meet all the time over there, I mean, you've got meetings posted, and you're meeting, you know, between, a lot of people you don't realize that you have a lot of meetings between your administrative sessions, which are like every two weeks. Okay, in those meetings that are going on, where no one hardly ever attends, tell us about some of the hidden things, now, I don't wanna use hidden like you guys are hiding, but what are some of the items that go on in those lowly attended meetings that, you know, tell us, give us a little secret, what's going on behind the scenes that might not be out there in the public eye that we really should know about? What's some of the concerns?
I was trying to get a proclamation passed for himself, is what I think he's trying to do.
We do a lot of detailed discussion, for instance.
Give us the topic.
Well, you know, if you've noticed on our big whiteboard, we've got expenses and tax revenue, and we're trying to figure out what is the right approach? How are we gonna restructure the taxes so that we meet and fund the core services of the county?
And that whiteboard discussion is important, so that the meetings go well, and again, these are public meetings, so if somebody wants to see what's going on, go look at that whiteboard.
They're all posted, all your meetings are posted.
And so, you know, like, I work at a private company, and so, when I get two or three of my coworkers around, you know, we work on whiteboards and stuff, the only difference is that you guys have to have those public, and we were joking earlier about having a quorum, and if you have a quorum, and it has to have minutes, and somebody has to be tracking all that stuff, so it's just a little bit extra bureaucracy, right?
It's part of the process, and, you know, we welcome people to those meetings.
Recently, we've had meeting after meeting after meeting on our health insurance.
Oh, that's exciting.
How's that going?
Well, initially, it went really well, we found a broker who was coming in and cutting our increase by a third, but since then, the devil is in the details, and because we did this last minute, we're having some struggles with everything that's involved in revamping everything.
When you say struggles, how much of those struggles gonna cost us? Give us a guesstimate, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of half a million, is it gonna cost us that much more than last year, or what's the estimate right now?
Well, these struggles aren't affecting the taxpayer, these struggles are affecting our employees.
It's gonna be passed on the employees?
No, no, let me finish, sir, let me finish.
Oh, wow, I'm...
It's signup issues for our employees, so that's where we're at now, those are the weeds we're in with the issues. What it's saving us is from $520,000 to $350,000, so $170,000.
Okay, so when you say issues, they're not financial issues right now?
Correct, no.
Open enrollment's going on right now, and when we brought this broker in, you know, we kinda expected open enrollment to go like they had a lot of experience with Platt County, and they don't. So, we're having some open enrollment issues, but we'll get it figured out.
Everybody will have what they need come December 1st.
And will they be happy with it?
Nobody's happy with it.
It's better than a 28% increase.
No, nobody's happy with increased healthcare costs, or any changes to their plan, unless they're changes they instigate, but as Dagmar just said, it's a lot better than where it was headed.
So, these county employees will be seeing an increase in their portion of the costs on this?
Some will, and some won't. Depends on what they sign up for.
Gotcha.
Our broker is doing a good job of helping us focus on the long-term health of the plan, so, you know, he's already saved us $170,000 just in, just this year. What we're really looking at is structuring plans that protect the health of the plan so that long-term, we don't have these big increases for either the county, the taxpayer, or the employee.
What about maintenance issues? We don't hear much about maintenance issues, so bring us up to date, how are the county buildings maintenance-wise? Good shape, bad shape?
It's your department. It's your department.
They need a lot of work, we've got a lot of deferred maintenance, and, you know, the Capital Improvements Fund has been the fund that we go to for money when we get an unexpected expense. It's a wrong way to handle things, but there again, we have Daniel working on our long-term plan for capital improvements, and that will be part of restructuring the tax to make sure that we don't get in the situation we're in right now, where we've got all this deferred maintenance, long-term.
Great, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I just wanna chime in, that we've been made aware, we're aware, we've been made aware of the window issue at the courthouse. If you look real close, you'll see that it's not how it should be. People wanna know, why don't you just fix the window? Well, the issue isn't the window, yes, the window's cracked, but we could replace the piece of glass, and that next day will be cracked, because we've got wood rot in the framing around the window and the doors. So, it's a really old building, and it's really expensive to maintain, and really expensive to fix, and as Ron said, our, what we call the Fund 5,000, for, because it's government accounting, that fund goes up and down based on current needs, unexpected... that fund goes up and down based on current needs, unexpected expenses. And honestly, we don't know from year to year what's gonna be in there that's gonna be available to fix things. There's no way around government.
That's one of the things that needs to be addressed when the taxes are restructured is capital maintenance improvement.
Gotcha. All right, guys, let's get to the fun stuff. We don't we don't want to drag on all this boring government talk too long. Let's get to the fun stuff. We're gonna play a little game of fact or crap. We asked the county commissioners to bring some questions that they could ask to Chris and I, and we'll try to answer them. We have a couple of contestants.
Shirley Vest.
Shirley Vest, number one. Shirley Vest, first question, we're gonna play for Shirley Vest. I'll tell you what, let's pick out a good prize for Shirley Vest. How about you offer Shirley the breakfast for two to a county commissioner meeting? What do you call those little things you do on Fridays? Coffee with commissioners on a Friday. Shirley Vest. All right, so do you guys have a question that you're ready to ask Chris or I? And we will guess whether this is fact or crap. Lay it on us, who wants to read a question?
How about it, John?
Okay, question. Ron enjoys restoring his grandpa's 1959 N Ford.
Ron is a historian, I know that much. He's really interested in history.
Does he know how to fix windows and roofs?
I don't, I don't, I don't know if he knows anything about vehicles.
The answer, that's no.
Fifty-nine what?
Fifty, 1950. Nine N Ford.
What kind of car is that?
If it would, if it would be something that you would be restoring.
That's a tractor. That sounds like a tractor, yeah.
That's a tractor.
I think you gave it away. I think we gotta go with fact on that, don't you think?
We'll say fact. We're guessing fact.
That is fiction.
Now, what I can tell you, what I can tell you about that, though, is if you want to see one of those tractors, you can go in John Nelly's backyard. He's got one out there.
Oh, John has one?
I'm restoring a 69 GTO convertible. It's a project I started about the same time I was elected and it's not done yet, so.
Okay.
Sorry, no lunch.
Surely you can still join us on Friday mornings for coffee.
Next contestant, Tammy Baker Sprinkle. Let's see if we can sprinkle in a victory for Tammy. Yes, let's do it. Did you see what I did there? I'll tell you what, we're getting good at this. All right, who's got the next question?
Okay, I'll do a question. Okay, you mentioned our work sessions.
Yes, I'm a big fan.
A big fan. We see you all the time there. During our work sessions, Ron will occasionally break out into song to a 70's or 80's ballad in order to make a point. Fact or crap?
It's probably an Aerosmith ballad that he's breaking out. I don't wanna, I don't wanna close my eyes. I don't wanna fall asleep. May all amazing. Oh, that's a great song. It's a great song.
Man, this is another tough one. I would.
Well, I got the first one wrong, so I'm gonna let you guess.
I know, I know John's into 70's and 80's music. I'm gonna say fact. Let's call it fact on that. Oh, it's actually John that does it. I should've gone with my instinct.
You should've gone with it.
You are now contractually obligated to hum a few bars of the aforementioned ballad. You have a go-to ballad, like, you know, sometimes I'll just break out the Love Boat song or something.
No, no, mine's usually pertains to what we're discussing at the moment. Singing Donna Summer.
Man, well, the good thing, we're not having to give away your prizes.
Didn't bring one of our.
That's fantastic.
We use that a lot over in our meetings. Obviously not salary commission meetings, but in our meetings, we use that a lot.
Jacob Hankins is our next contestant. We might be here all night trying to give away three prizes, you guys.
There was one in here.
Read one, read one.
Here we go. I think there was one in here.
Not that tough one there.
This is a really good question. Dagmar is often caught off guard, ill-prepared for a work session. But John and I really appreciate her carefree spirit and find her very endearing.
And that's definitely crap. Biggest load of crap I've heard all day.
I've only met these three people in a few minutes and I already know. I want something done. Let me go in this direction.
We do find her endearing, but most of the rest of that is.
She would never come unprepared. Is that what you said to her guys?
What are you guys' backgrounds? How did you become to be county commissioners?
I was asked to run three years ago. I've been in state legislature. I'm also a father, family man, business owner, so.
Aerosmith fan?
That qualifies you right there.
Dagmar, you take the next one. Why did you run?
Why did I run?
Yeah, answer Chris's question.
I just felt like I could do a better job. I have a, I was a stay-at-home mom. Then what I was seeing, I was a stay-at-home mom for 18 years. Before that, I worked at the Federal Reserve Bank as an analyst. And I'd always worked behind the scenes in government, just volunteering. I'd hang around this guy every once in a while and we'd work on the same campaigns and stuff and.
Federal Reserve Bank analysts? That's some exciting stuff right there. John, hey, John, you take the next question. And while you're talking, I'm gonna pull out a prop, but go ahead and explain, answer Chris's question.
Well, Chris, I've been involved in politics for a long time, long time in Platte County. I've helped a lot of candidates get elected.
He was, he was kind of a lurker behind the scenes. I heard him referred to as the lurker behind the scenes one time.
In fact, I was gonna run the county from my living room.
I heard that.
That was several years ago. And you know what, Ivan? I finally made it.
You did?
I can call into the office from the living room now.
That's pretty awesome. That is pretty awesome. And before, Chris, I want you to see this. Before John became a politician, he and, John used to work over at Wells Bank, which is Catty Corner from the Landmark office. And John and I, we got to know each other way back in the 90's because we both worked in downtown Platte City. And we were like the two youngest people that worked in downtown Platte City. I'm not exaggerating, am I? Okay, so this was from the 90's and John and I, we would try to liven up downtown Platte City because as I said, we were the youngest dudes around at that time. So one time, this was 1996, John and I had this brilliant idea when Bill Kenny, who was running, a former Chiefs quarterback, was running for lieutenant governor, John and I had an idea. We said, hey, why don't we just stop traffic and play catch with Bill Kenny in the middle of Platte City's Main Street? And so we did. And then we did a full page spread about it. There's Bill Kenny with an autographed football. There's Bill Kenny throwing a pass with traffic lining up behind him.
What I really want to focus on, though, and I'm not sure if the camera can pick this up on it, is, boy, yeah, I mean, you were, you were two young bucks. I mean, you were two good-looking young fellers back in in the mid 90's. That's.
We were young.
That's, that's good-looking, good-looking program.
We upped the testosterone on Main Street, that's for sure.
Boy, howdy. Nice job.
And that was really fun until we broke Mr. Farley's window.
Mr. Farley, and I understand, did we break his window? I just heard from, Mr. Farley is no longer with us, but, and I heard from a friend of his after he had passed away that he was really mad at us. We went and we posed and we took a picture in front of Mr. Farley's law office because Mr. Farley was a Democrat. And Kenny and John and I leaned to the more conservative party. And so we went and just for fun, took a picture in front of Mr. Farley's office. I, he never told me he did not appreciate that, but I heard from a friend of his recently that he did not appreciate that, John. But those were good days.
Yes, they were.
Do we still have another prize to give away or are we? We got, okay, give us another question.
I got a question, here we go.
This is for Trish. Stinnet.
Trish Stinnet.
Here's the question.
Here we go. Fact or crap?
Fact or crap? Ron is an avid sportsman and generously shares with us his hunting booty that he has meticulously and hermetically vacuum sealed.
Did you just say booty on this show? I mean, come on, Dagmar.
And I said it would be her. Good job.
Read that again, I was, I was.
Ron, you were just throwing by the booty.
The word booty got me.
Ron is an avid sportsman and generously shares with us his hunting booty that he has meticulously and hermetically vacuum sealed.
Well, I do know he's going deer hunting this weekend. So you got a guess on this one?
Every deer hunter I know up here loves to hermetically seal. That's all I know. They didn't do anything. My brother is, lives in Tracy and he's a taxidermist. So I, that's all I need to know about hermetically sealing things, so. We're really doing really poor on this. Uh, let's go fact.
Oh, it's crap. He shares nothing. He shares nothing. He's a genius sportsman. I know.
I'll have my brother grab some stuff.
Not one filet, nothing.
It is in my freezer.
You're never gonna live that down until you break stuff up.
I'll tell you what, you know what? One of the prizes we have, one of the prizes we have is time-sensitive. We have to keep playing until we give away these concert tickets.
We got one more, Mark?
Mark Owen. Mark Owen.
Somebody's in trouble.
Mark Owen, I hope you like Bret Michaels because he's in concert Saturday night at the Americastar Casino. And we're gonna play until somebody wins these concert tickets. You guys, I hope you brought some more questions because we're gonna try to win at least one more time. John, you have another question?
I do. Dagmar, fact or crap? Dagmar has four kids, the oldest of which has a college soccer scholarship.
That is fact. I'm saying fact right now. He's at Azusa Pacific playing soccer.
Mark's the winner.
That's the problem with the county is that you don't have a yes button. All you guys only have no button. What the hell's going on with you guys here? I'm gonna buy you a yes button. I'm gonna bring it up next week.
It'll be used about as often as a French racquet.
Wow, that took a while.
It was good, I liked that.
Oh, my goodness, but so Mark Owen is going to Bret Michaels or he's giving those away to someone he's going. One of the two. Now, we do have a prize from Stacy Blaha. She's got this Oral-B Genius thingy. Chris and I, you and I were trying to figure out what this is, but it has Bluetooth technology that helps you.
Everything's better with Bluetooth.
Absolutely. What you do is it helps you brush every area for the right amount of time to never miss a zone. So you put your phone right there and you Bluetooth this sucker and it's gonna, it's gonna tell you where to brush and for how long.
Do you own anything that's Bluetooth?
Yes. This is an awesome prize.
My, my car, I can Bluetooth in my car with my phone.
Attaboy. And then you can brush your teeth.
I can brush my teeth.
Talk to the phone in the car.
I'll tell you what, do you guys have one more question? We'll try to give this away tonight because Stacy Blaha is one of the sponsors tonight. I love you because she gave us a vote on the prizes.
Elke Mitchell. Elke Mitchell's gonna be a.
John has been detained on the El Salvadorian side of the border with Honduras.
Oh, my. Detained? Fact or crap? I don't want that to be true because I'm not in the store.
I was with John one time in the 90's when he should've been detained. But we were not in El Salvador.
This is two stories tonight where the people who have come on here. I don't know, man. You've known this young man for longer than I, that's crazy.
I do know. I do know.
You get detained in El Salvador, you wouldn't be sitting here right now.
Well, he has been places. He's a world traveler.
Why don't you, why don't you say fact?
And you say the other one? Okay, and then they? Okay, I'm gonna say fact. That's a fact!
We're gonna have a vote on this. Commissioners, who thinks Ivan's correct?
I say he's correct.
Did you say crap?
No, I said fact.
A fact, I'm going with Ivan.
Yes!
Thank you.
My, my vote came in under the wire, so that doesn't count.
Who's our winner? Elke, Elke Mitchell.
Elke Mitchell.
All right, this is a fantastic prize. This is, this is a.
That's a heavy duty item, man.
That really is. This is the best prize I think we've ever given away on this show. And Mark Owen really likes Bret Michaels. Elke's your mom? I did not know that seat's kind of.
Elke!
Now you tell us.
Elka, oh, gosh, Elka.
You'll have to call in to get it.
You're gonna have to call in to make arrangements to pick up your prize. Well, actually, you may know her.
No.
You may know your mom.
Make sure you give it to her.
You may know your mom? That's exactly right. You do know your mom. She just became, I saw that name on Facebook recently, actually. I did not know that was your mom. How about that? All right, Chris, we've got to move on. You know what? We've gotta do our little segment for the gamblers out there, right?
Yeah, I've got, I've got one final question. One rapid-fire question for the commissioners because you guys are awesome. I, this has been really cool. Tell me in a sentence or less, your favorite thing about Platte County. It could be a place, it could be a restaurant, it could be the fact that you guys have a no button, which is really cool. I'll start, we'll start over here. Favorite, favorite thing about Platte County?
It's where my family is. And we've raised them here and we love it. And I would trade it. It's a great place to raise a family.
I absolutely love meeting the people that I've met during the campaign and as commissioner. There are some really interesting people with intriguing skill sets and just, yeah, it's been a joy. I've really enjoyed getting to know people, you know.
It's home. It's a beautiful place. You can go to the bluffs at Weston or you can go to the bottoms or, you know, there's just, you can go to the country where I live or you can go down into where they live and be in all the busyness. We've got great diversity, home of the airport. Now we're gonna, hopefully, we're gonna see a wonderful new single terminal. And hopefully, we're gonna have new flights that we didn't have before, so.
More restrooms, John. I'm excited about more restrooms.
They're gonna name, they're gonna name a one-holder afternoon at the airport. I'm pretty excited because I voted for it, so I mean, that's at least I could do. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming. You're gonna have to sit through a degenerate gambling segment, so don't leave. Dr. Stacy and Dr. Trent Blaha at Platte Valley Dental Care will treat you like family because they are. This mother-son dental team is educating its patients on the importance of dental health and how it affects the rest of your body. Their vision is focused on creating an ever-evolving dental practice that offers the highest quality care to children and adults. Call Platte Valley Dental to schedule your family's appointment or check out their online scheduling at pvdentalcare.com. If you want to call them, 816-858-2027. Thanks, guys. Chris?
Yes, it's time.
It's time for.
Lock. Of the week.
Lock of the week.
I gotta, I gotta remember what my lock of the week. This was a hard week, man, because there's a lot of easy games to pick, a lot of blowouts, but the spreads are the problem is, is.
Against the spreads is so much tougher than than just picking a straight-up game, you know, as the degenerates out there know.
All right, I'm gonna go first.
You're gonna go first?
Yeah, I'll go first.
By the way, let me just remind folks, we were 2-0 last week. So if you watched the show, you made some money. Dollar, dollar bill.
My confidence level was lower this week than it was last week. I'm gonna go with the LA Rams. I don't know why, because the LA Rams are, the LA Rams, but they're playing a beat-up Houston Texans team. They're 11-point favorites, so I'm gonna go with the Rams minus 11. I would only put a dollar on that, though, because I'm not horribly confident. But of the games, I think that's, this has the best chance because the Texans are just beat up.
That's two weeks in a row, you've laid a big number.
Yeah, I know, I know, I need to, I need to go down, I don't like numbers over seven in the NFL, so...
And like you said, it is a tough, tough week on the lines, uh, I'm doing something, I'm gonna go with the New Orleans Saints, minus-three over the Buffalo Bills, and it's actually played at Buffalo, I don't like to lay points on the road like that, but there's not much to pick from on the board this week. What is the best kept secret in the NFL, Chris, do you know what, this is, this is why I'm picking the Saints, I think their defense is one of the best kept secrets in the NFL, I really think, they've got a good D this year, usually you think of New Orleans, you think they're all offense and Drew Brees, their D is playing well, taking the Saints minus-three at Buffalo, that's my lock of the week.
I like it.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
See if we can go to it up.
We did good last week.
We did, we were able to brag.
That was a good week.
Okay, guys, next week, we are off to, uh, taking the show to Parkville, we're going downtown Parkville to the Parkville Artisan Studio, and Dagmar, the, the owner of the studio is a friend of yours, right?
Yeah, Trisha, yeah.
You were, you were mentioning that, okay, so tell us about...
She's one of the gals I've really enjoyed getting to know through my campaign and everything, she's, uh, just, she's a unique combination of, like, life coach and artist and just therapist, and she's really fun.
Holy cow, just in the nick of time.
I have a feeling she's gonna ask you to do some embarrassing things, like make pottery or something.
Hey, we worked ARs a couple weeks ago, man, so we're, we're set.
That is fun, and she did that photo op wall.
Yeah, we could like pose in front of the photo op wall.
With the wings?
I love it.
I can like get on your shoulders and, and, oh, it's gonna be awesome.
Sing Aerosmith songs?
Yeah, you guys would show up. It's gonna be fun, you guys should just do that ghost scene together, you know, the water wheel. Probably not, we'll take it.
That'd be awesome, wouldn't it?
Take it everybody, Dagmar.
I mean...
Well, we do like each other, not to that extent. Well, guys, we will see you next week, thanks so much for joining us, it's been fun, thanks to the county commissioners, thanks, guys, you were good, good guests, good fun.
I agree, Chris, thank you.
Thank you, guys, that was great, we had a lot of fun, thanks a lot.
All right, we see you, let's see, we'll see you a week from tonight, next Thursday, November sixteen, we'll be in downtown Parkville. See you next Thursday, everybody, thank you, good night.
Good night.